Good evening and welcome to the debate with the candidates for the Bismarck City Commission: Nancy Guy, Beth Nodlin, Greg Zinker, and Mark Splenskowski. This evening's debate takes place in the Russell Reed Auditorium of the North Dakota Heritage Center and has been organized by the League of Women Voters and Dakota Media Access in partnership with the Bismarck Tribune, Bismarck Mandan Home Builders Association, Bismarck Mandan Chamber of Commerce, and Bismarck Mandan Board of Realtors. I am Caitlin McDonald, member of the League of Women Voters, and I will be your moderator this evening. Joining me onstage tonight and to put questions to the candidates are League of Women Voter Members Kathryn Sprinzenatic and Robin Thorstensen. Our purpose this evening is to provide voters with information about the candidates and their positions on issues that affect the citizens of Bismarck, North Dakota. The candidates have not received any questions in advance, and the first responses to questions will be rotated between the candidates. Tonight's debate format is as follows: Each candidate will have 60 seconds to make an opening statement; then after opening statements, the candidates will respond to questions from our panelists. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to respond to each question. After all candidates have responded to the question, we will invite them to engage in crosstalk, a dialogue about the issue raised, for no more than three minutes. We encourage all candidates to participate, and any candidate may begin in the crosstalk segment. After the final question of the evening, each candidate will then have an additional 60 seconds to make a closing statement. Candidates are asked to comply with our time restrictions so that we can get to as many questions as possible. Our timer tonight is Anessa Pfeifer-Johnson, and she will let you know when your question responses are down to 30 seconds, then 10 seconds, then stop. For the crosstalk segment, she will indicate when we are down to one minute, and then stop. This is intended to be a respectful exchange of ideas and to provide the candidates with the best opportunity to discuss the important issues without distraction. So we ask that the audience here tonight please reserve applause until the debate has ended and understand that cheering or jeering will not be allowed from the audience. So now let's get to our candidates. Each of you now have 60 seconds to make an opening statement. Ms. Nodlin, you may go first with your opening statement.
Well, thank you Caitlin, and thank you to the League of Women Voters and everyone who's here and watching. My name is Beth Nodlin. I am a small business owner and a commercial business building owner. I'm a homeowner. I am a community advocate and volunteer, and I'm a wife and I'm a mother. And I have started three businesses in Bismarck. One is Bismarck's only downtown coworking space called Juniper Working Tile. Another is the commercial building that has four tenants. And then my primary business is Juniper, but it's an environmental consulting company. And through all of that, and with my 25 years of business experience, I have great familiarity with contracting, with budgeting, with regulatory compliance, and I think those are the skills that I'm hoping to bring to the city commission. So I, uh, I'm running because I think that the community in the last few years has done phenomenal collaborative planning. And I think that these initiatives have passed the course, I mean, the roadmap that's been written, I think we need to continue those forward, and that's what I would hope to do, is to stay the course with helping Bismarck's.
Thank you, Ms. Nodlin. We're out of time for your opening statement. Commissioner Guy, please present your opening statement.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for this opportunity to discuss issues important to our community. First of all, I'm running for reelection because I love Bismarck. I've lived here for 30 years, and I wouldn't live anywhere else. I've worked with residents, nonprofits, and the business community on a wide variety of issues like a city orchard, a housing needs assessment study, public transit options for seniors and disabled residents, ending special assessments, and homelessness and behavioral health issues. I'm asking voters for the opportunity to continue working on smart, sustainable, infrastructure funding methods that end special assessments, homelessness and underlying behavioral health issues, increasing the inventory of affordable housing for first-time homebuyers, and business development to increase the tax base and quality of life in Bismarck.
Thank you. Mr. Splenskowski, your opening statement, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mark Splenskowski. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting this on. It's very important for the voters to know who's running, to know as much about them as they possibly can. Uh, I've been here in Bismarck for five years now. I moved here to marry my wife and raise our family. We have one little girl and a little boy due here in three weeks. Uh, I started out working construction when I first moved here, then I got a job working for Burley County as a tax appraiser, and that's where I'm currently employed at. The reason that I'm running is this city needs change. We've had the opportunity to learn more about the taxes, about the issues that taxpayers are concerned about, and it's through these issues and talking with taxpayers through the years that I've learned what needs to be changed, and I share these concerns with them. So I appreciate this opportunity to be able to come out here and tell you guys why I am running and for you to learn more about me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Zinker, your opening statement.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting tonight's debate. Thank those of you in attendance and those of you that are watching from home. I hope that you find tonight informative for the June 12 election. I'm running for the Bismarck City Commission because Bismarck's an awesome place to live. It's the greatest city on the earth, and why would you not want to try to help run it? I was born and raised here. I'm very proud to call Bismarck my home. For 46 years, I've had opportunities to travel, to travel other parts of the country. I've had opportunities that people have called me to ask me to relocate, and each and every time I've said no. I've turned them down. Um, I have coached young, young people for over 25 years. In fact, my first baseball practice for the new season is tomorrow night. I understand what it takes for a team to move in the right direction. And I have one word for you. The word is team. Together, everyone accomplishes more, and that's the attitude that I'll take to Bismarck City Commission.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to our questions. Our first question will be presented by Kathryn Sprinzenatic, and will be first answered by Commissioner Guy.
Good evening. Quality of life is important when attracting and retaining workforce. What will you do to improve quality of life in Bismarck?
Commissioner Guy?
Thank you. Quality of life really encompasses so many facets of our community in Bismarck. For example, our library. Our library had more than 385,000 patron visits last year, and that is more than Fargo's library. It, it is just an enormous, just an incredible asset to the community. And quality of life encompasses the arts, the humanities. Um, you know, we want to make sure that everyone in our community has a great quality of life, so that means we need to address our, our homeless issues and our behavioral health issues. We also need to make sure that we have policies and ordinances that support our seniors so that they can stay in their homes as long as possible. So really, when you look all around us, it's in our streets, it's in our water system, it's in our, our streetlights, and it's the entire community. So if we can develop that unique character that really, you know, makes people say, wow, Bismarck's a great place to raise my family, I think we can attract some of those families.
Thank you. Mr. Splenskowski?
Quality of life is a, it has, takes many sides. It takes many views, and quality of life can also be considered for your, for your average young person, for your older person, for your middle-aged person. It has to be considered for the business owner, has to be considered for safety of the public, for safety of the streets. What I would like to do, and what I would like to see in Bismarck is a community that is, that works well with business, because all those are connected. Business owners are family people. Business owners are mothers. Business owners are fathers, and those people need to make a living in order to feed their families. So we need to have Bismarck be a business-friendly place. We need to keep our streets safe. We need to keep them well-maintained. We need to keep a, a well-informed public, keep them knowing, knowing on the issues, the current issues, what the commission is doing, what the city is doing at all times, so that their voice is heard, so that their interest in this city that they have here can be protected and increased in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Zinker, your answer.
Quality of life, um, I think that's one of the unique things about Bismarck, North Dakota. We have a great quality of life, in my, my opinion. We have, we have a river, vibrant park system. Our schools, whether it's Light of Christ Catholic Schools, public schools, Shiloh Element, our Shiloh Schools, we have very good quality of life for our schools. We have two universities, University of Mary and Bismarck State College, that help those, those learning objectives further into the future. Quality of life, I think that we need to, we need to tier down just a little bit, talk more about affordable housing to make it more envi, or more friendly for people to come to our community, um, which affordable housing just isn't about buying a house, it's about being able to afford rent. I think the last statistic out there was that rent is, rent, average rent in Bismarck's like $845 to $865. Somebody making $12 an hour, it's gonna be, it's tough for them to afford that, that rent, plus if they have a child. We have a great park system. Our, you know, we have to work with collaboration through our, our governments that we have, whether it's the school board, park system, to make sure that we can keep that quality of life as high as we expect it to be.
Thank you. Ms. Nodlin, your answer.
Well, I am a business owner, and this is a major issue for me, and I think if you look at the surveys in Bismarck of other employers, that the attraction and retention of employees is one of the top issues. So what I do when I recruit employees is, when they come into Bismarck, or when they're here, is to show them our very vibrant downtown. I always provide them with the gifts that are made in North Dakota. I give them the Chamber of Commerce materials. When employees start here, we work really hard to help them find housing. We have lists of the landlords and renters. We bring them to the historical society. We take them to the restaurants downtown. We bring them, we tell them about the, the sports leagues. We've sponsored curling teams, and we encourage them to get involved in the community. We, we always give gift bags to them that include things like tickets to the film festivals. We take them to the art alleys. So not only getting them here and trying to work them into the community, but then to keep them here. So part of that is paying them well, connecting them into other professional associations in town. We have the issues that were discussed of finding affordable housing, especially for people who are first coming here and don't know if they'll stay. The reality is, is if we can get people through the first winter in Bismarck, then we have a really good chance of retaining them.
Thank you. We'll now open this topic for crosstalk. Anyone may start.
Well, I would add that we, we connect people into religious communities, and we try and help, help them find, and you know, any kind of ethnic group or community that they might feel connected to. So I know that that's been brought up.
We, um, we have such a, a vibrant sense of community in Bismarck. I've lived in three large metropolitan areas in three different states across the country, and we never felt the same sense of community anywhere else that we feel here. So when the opportunities arose to come back to Bismarck, we passed every one of them up until there was one here in Bismarck. So it's a really special place, and sometimes that's hard to describe.
Yeah, Bismarck is a, a very, very special place. I didn't grow up in Bismarck, but I moved here. I always wanted to live in Bismarck, even when I was a kid. My sister married a fellow from out here, and I grew up coming out here to visit them. I remember when I was a kid, driving home one day, I told my dad, I said, "Dad, someday I'm gonna live in Bismarck." He's like, "Why, why would you wanna live out here?" I said, "It's a wonderful place to be. It's beautiful, it's, it's family-oriented, it's a close-knit community. Uh, it's, it's a very special place to be." So I think that's probably something that all of us can agree on, is Bismarck is, has a very close-knit sense of community.
Would anybody else like to add anything for this crosstalk segment?
I would like to add that I think that it's, the reality is, is being a Bismarck native, is that when you're from here, it is a really close-knit neighborhood, but we have a problem with people trying to break into our close-knit networks. And so I think a really important thing is for us to focus, if we're gonna grow, we need more people, and so we have to figure out how to be welcoming of, of a diverse workforce. So I think we need to open up our, our networks a little bit.
Sure.
I think we'll find that workforce is gonna be our major issue in the next three to five years, just because of, in the skilled, the skilled construction industry that I've worked in, um, over almost three decades now, it's, it's always been a battle to find that new, that new role of, uh, army of guys, so to speak, that's going to, or people that are gonna work in that construction industry. Who's gonna build the buildings? Who's gonna plumb the houses? Who's gonna, who's gonna put air quality into my, in my homes? Who's gonna provide the infrastructure for growth for the city? Those are all people that, running a track hoe is not an easy thing to do.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to our next question. Mr. Splenskowski will answer first.
Good evening. In order to support a positive business environment, what specific changes or improvements would you propose?
I'd propose speaking with the business owners. We need to sit down as individual commissioners and as a commission, talk to the business owners of all, of all areas, whether it's development, whether it's, uh, construction, whether it's, uh, store owners, restaurant owners, cafes, a lot of breweries have been popping up here and there. We need to speak with the, the business owners and realize what restrictions we're putting on them, if we are putting them on them, and get rid of those restrictions if they are not necessary. We need to talk with the area developers and see what regulations are not necessary, what regulations do not affect the safety of the homebuyer, because that's number one, is safety. We have to make sure that our, our homebuyers are buying safe homes. But we also need to make sure that that initial cost is as low as it can be while still maintaining the quality and the safety of the home. So we need to talk to, we need to talk to business owners and make sure that we are doing everything we can as city government to work with them and to make Bismarck as business-friendly as we possibly can, while still maintaining safety code and making sure that we have quality products.
Thank you. Mr. Zinker, your answer, please.
Well, the business environment's what, what's gonna drive the city, whether it's manufacturing, whether it's building homes, whether it's, um, people pouring concrete. Um, I get a, when I talk to people, I hear, I hear a lot of, "Hey, there's a little bit of red tape here. This ordinance doesn't quite make a lot of sense." You know, I've attended, I've attended the city commission meetings since I've announced in January, and I find it ironic that the last two commission meetings, that there were, there were two, there were two ordinances that just jumped out at me. One was, the last meeting was a sign ordinance. That was a brand-new ordinance that, um, that sign company met everything in the ordinance and yet was denied that. Now, I guess it was a couple safety things, and sometimes when you're on the outside looking in, you don't get, you don't get to see all of the, the details, or the closed-door meetings type things, but if we just had a brand-new ordinance, and this business wants to develop business and generate income, how can, how can the, how could it not meet it? How, how does it not work that it was able to, he was not able to put up that sign? I just, I don't get that. It's, it seems to be a mundane thing. Hey, we're gonna make an ordinance, and then it doesn't work out. The next one is, um, the Mr. Zimmerman's Edmonton Brewery, you know, a historic facility that we want to create our, our historic ordinances, and we have those in there for the Renaissance zones, to, to make sure Bismarck doesn't lose its heritage.
I'm sorry, you're out of time. Ms. Nodlin?
Can you make that sound a little bigger?
We'll get a banner for next year.
Awesome, thanks.
Ms. Nodlin, your answer?
Well, I have this conversation as a business owner regularly, and I work really hard with entrepreneurial community, with the Start Bismarck community and the One Million Cups. I've encouraged organizations to use my space, the Working Tile space, to kind of foster that entrepreneurial spirit. Bismarck's community isn't the same as Fargo's, it's very different. It's an older, established entrepreneur community. I've worked really hard with the schools to do, um, career training, to try to grow our own, so that children or students who want to stay in Bismarck and have careers in the sciences or the humanities know that they have jobs here. I think I would be really helpful if we weren't as focused on the primary industry fields, but that we, we were supportive of the consulting services, like my own. My industry, which is a multi-billion dollar industry, works in red tape and in compliance with regulations, so I'm pretty well-versed in what could, where it can be cut, where it should be cut, and so that's part of what I think I could bring, is, that's what I do. And so, um, I think that the communication between the larger industry, the larger employers in Bismarck with the startup and small businesses would be really helpful, and that's some of the stuff that happens, like with the mayor's DisruptWell conferences, and I've been a participant in those.
Thank you. Commissioner Guy, your answer.
Well, I think a really great place to start supporting the business environment is through the, uh, Bismarck Mandan Chamber and the Bismarck Mandan Development Association. I've served on two committees for the chamber, the Government Affairs Committee and the, um, Infrastructure Subcommittee of the Local Issues Committee, too. And I think that what I hear in those committee meetings is one of our number-one issues is talent attraction. That's getting people here to fill all of the jobs that we have open in Bismarck, and they range from medical physicians to, um, engineering, to service, to retail. They're really all over the board. And in fact, last week, when I was at the Housing Finance Agency's State Housing Summit, Elliot Eisenberg, who's a nationally-known economist, was saying that he felt that our biggest problem in Bismarck, he loves everything about Bismarck's economy, but our biggest problem is talent attraction and finding people to fill those open positions, because if you can't hire people, your businesses can't grow. And if there's no one to hire, you can't start up that business. So along with that, we also need infrastructure to support business expansion and new businesses, and we need, and, and the new neighborhoods that we need for the new employees that are coming to town, and, you know, increasing affordable housing.
Sorry, you're out of time. We'll now open this topic for crosstalk.
So again, you know, affordable housing is, is gonna be a real issue for all of the employees that we need to bring to Bismarck, and I think we've hit the saturation point on homes above that $200,000 mark. And it is tough to build one for less than that, and it's tough for, for a builder to have a profit margin in that area. So we really need to put our heads together with the builders and the developers and look at our policies and ordinances to see what we can do to support that kind of, uh, house building and, you know, increase that inventory so prices come down.
I think it's also important that we look at opportunities for infill and for renovation and for resale of existing properties. I think it's really important that we keep our neighborhoods strong, too, our, our historic neighborhoods and our, our more dense neighborhoods in this, inside this, middle of the city.
I think that's gonna be tough to look to, to increase affordable housing when 25% of a, of a home right now is all about regulation. Not just, not just local regulation, but state, federal, and what city has to do. Um, I'm a, I'm a board member for the Bismarck Mandan Home Builders Association, and I was a president in 2016, and for that duration of time, back to even 2014, there's been many, many times that, that the developers and, and builders have tried to chat with, talk to the city to, to try to deregulate some of those instances, and it's just, it's very seldom that does, that it happens. So you gotta, you have to have teamwork. You can't just let one person be a, a quote-unquote dictator in, in what the, what the codes and regulations are gonna be. You have to, you have to work as, as a team. As for the infill side of it, I don't think there's a lot of empty lots in the, in the heart of Bismarck anymore. There are some, you know, that could be done, but you gotta remember, some of that infrastructure not only is, is city infrastructure, but it's also the utilities, are the, are the utilities ready to infill some parts of the city.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to add?
Greg, are all those 25% of the regulations you're talking about, are all of them unnecessary?
No, not all. I didn't say, I said, but 25% of building a house is, is regulation. So if you have a $200,000 house, 25% of that is, what, $50,000, right? You know, so you gotta put a lot in there. And, and, mind you, there is not one builder in the city that wants to build an unsafe home. There isn't one. But as to new ideas or inventive, innovative ideas or new, we just had one the other day with the, um, footings and foundations. There's new ways to do those types of things, so, and that's coming up on the city commission.
Thank you. We're out of time for crosstalk on this topic, but we'll be moving on to our next question. Our next question will be answered first by Mr. Zinker.
Homelessness was a hot topic in 2017, the closing of a men's shelter, and will continue to be a concern in 2018. What should the city do to combat this and other social issues?
Well, homelessness is gonna have to be a community-wide effort. It's just not gonna be a, a city task. Um, it's gotta, you gotta work with the United Way, you have to work with the faith organizations, and the city's gonna have to be a, a horse in the game, so to speak. Ironically, it's funny that you bring that up, because in 2015, there was a study for the cities of Bismarck and Mandan, and one of the topics in that, in that home study was about homelessness. And they said, you know, "Prepare yourself, Bismarck, for, um, 50 homeless people." I'm a little disappointed that no place along the line was there any communication with Ruth Meyers that they were struggling financially, that we could have been on the forefront of helping that facility maybe stay in place, or a group of people come, be ready to, to fix it, like the United Way did.
Thank you. Ms. Nodlin, you may answer the question.
Well, I think this is gonna be one of the most important issues that the city commission is gonna face in the upcoming years, and I think that there's already been a lot of work done. There's a, a very collaborative effort happening in the, uh, community with a lot of the nonprofits, and there, there's also, the, there is the homeless coalitions at the state level, so to speak, and, and the community level. Some of the shelters that have been open are doing well, and they're working on employment issues. Um, my, I have a downtown office, and I see people on the street every day, and I park next to the, to the, the shelter that's been set up, and I, I think that the work that has started and the support from the nonprofits in Bismarck is crucial, and then the, we're gonna have to find out what help can come, will come from the county as well. So there's gonna be also intergovernmental agency cooperation that we're gonna need to, to look into. I think the other issue that we have to deal with that's underlying with the homeless issue is the addiction issue, and so at the same time that we're working on, on the issue of homelessness, we need to also support and expand and, and address the, the issue of, of addiction. And I know that the mayor has created a number of committees and task force, so again, there's this fabulous community-based collaborative work on finding solutions to this problem.
Thank you. Commissioner Guy?
I've been working with the Missouri Valley Coalition for Homeless People for two-and-a-half years now, and I'd like to see the city appropriate, uh, more over time, because I think the more that we participate with the homeless coalition, the nonprofit service providers, county government, the city of Mandan, the state of North Dakota, uh, we can get all of the moving pieces that it takes to address the homelessness and underlying behavioral health issues. Uh, you know, we can keep those pieces moving and help these people get back into a more productive life. United Way has, uh, decided to continue offering emergency sheltering services for several years, so I'm looking forward to working with them to, you know, kind of plan out how that's going to look and where it will be located permanently. going to look and where it will be located permanently and how it's going to work out with the homeless coalition and other providers. And I did also just learn that Bismarck Burley Public Health is going to work with the coalition to revamp the tenure plan to end homelessness. The current tenure plan is up this year, so there's a lot going on.
Thank you. Mr. Spanskowski?
I think that it is, it is a community effort. People need to come together to, to try to fix this problem. We need to talk to churches, we need to talk to nonprofits, of course. But everything's connected. When the, when, you cannot find affordable housing. Like Mr. Zinker said, you know, the average rent is $800 a month. You know, when I was first married, when I first moved here, you know, I'd have been starving to death if my wife didn't have a job as well. So it's all, it's all interconnected. You know, we need affordable housing. We need affordable mobile home parks. We need to make sure that, that the lower, the lower budget homes are not taxed inordinately, do not have inordinate specials on them, because it's all interconnected. When a person can't afford a house and they can't afford an apartment, they're going to go into a mobile home. It's only natural. And if they get special assessed, because trailer parks can be assessed, special assessed up to one and a half times as compared to residential lots. And when those things all come together and they can't even afford a trailer house or a mobile home anymore, then they have no choice but be homeless because they can't afford anything. So we need to come together as a, as a community and try to, to take care of this issue to make affordable housing for everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Zinker, your answer.
Didn't I start?
Oh, excuse me. I'll now open this question for crosstalk. We'll try, how about that? We'll try crosstalk. Yeah. Homelessness? I already got there. Yes, my apologies, my apologies. So we'll open this up for crosstalk now.
What? Can I start then?
Absolutely. Yeah.
So I, I think homelessness, there's, there's two things. One, there's, there may just be a group of people who really don't want the responsibility to, I mean, no one really wants to be truly, truly homeless, but some people don't want to fit in society either. You see it a lot, maybe more in the bigger cities, Minneapolis or Chicago type thing. I still go back to the fact that we have to, as a community, come together. Whether it's the city's got to put, what I think with the, city just put in $10,000, I think, earlier this year to, to help fund that, to kickstart that. And we're just, we, we have to do more somehow, some way, whether if we have garage sales or whether, you know, we help pick up streets or something, we have to get those people back into environment. We have to. They have to give back to the community somehow.
And we have to do it, we have to do it intelligently because I know that when Ruth Meyer shut down, the city, you know, didn't know what to do. We have to be proactive, not reactive in this situation. And their temporary fix to the problem, you know, a lot of residential homeowners very angry because it was not put in a very good spot to those residences. We need to be intelligent about it. We need to talk to everybody, have open discussions, throw all kinds of ideas. Because the more ideas that we get, the more good ideas we're going to get. So we need to make this, again, a community effort, talk to everybody about it.
And to build on that, just a one, we have to actually bring them back into the community at their pace. Because if they don't want that social aspect of, of going to a job every day, it's got to be at their pace. You know, maybe it's a, it's a veteran with PSD, you know, ah, shoot, PST, PTSD, thanks, bud. Okay? You know, so there's, so there's those issues. We gotta take, or it's a drug addiction problem that caused them to go back to the street. We have to do it at their pace, not because everybody in this room and everybody watching at home, we have a quicker pace than some people. It's just a roll up your sleeves and get it done type thing. So I think we just need to be compassionate to them.
Thank you.
One of the things that I think that we should look at too is that we're going to, is the issue of increased funding. Where is that going to come from? I mean, the counties have a lot of their responsibility for the social services, but it's certainly having an impact on the city budget with increased police calls and patrol activities and emergency situations. So it is a real issue for, within the city, with the city budget. So we're going to have to find somewhere. And I don't think rummage sales are going to do it, but I think we're going to have to find somewhere and some, some avenue to, to fund some of this through the city.
Thank you. We're out of time for crosstalk on that question. The next question will first be answered by Ms. Nodlin.
A 2018 Community Health Needs Assessment led by Bismarck Burley Public Health showed that the availability of mental health providers is of high concern to residents and stakeholders. Also, the survey showed that obesity remains a concern over the past three years. What can the city of Bismarck do to make an impact on these two health issues?
Well, I think the city and, and some of the nonprofit organizations have done a lot about getting Bismarck active and creating great trails and great parks and promoting activity. The question of the health, of the availability of health services, did you say mental health services?
Mm-hmm.
So I guess one of the, my concerns is that, along with addiction and behavioral issues that we have, I mean, I, I come from this from a, from a really personal place. I have a child with an intellectual disability. And so I'm pretty intimately aware of the services and the, that are available in, in the community, at least for the child, at the, for children. And, and I've learned a great deal about what's available for adults. And so I think that this is a pretty important issue that I know that the, that Sanford and CHI, and St. A's have, and have been working collaboratively with, with the city. So I guess I would like to know, I, I'm not familiar with that report and I would like to see it, I guess, first. But I, but I think that the, the question of providing health services, including addiction services and mental health services, is, is paramount. It's, it's, you know, kind of where I'm living in the future.
Thank you. Commissioner Guy, you may answer the question.
Thank you. I think that we all recognize, after hearing on the news last week, there are a report from a consultant reporting to a legislative committee that North Dakota does not do a very good job in delivering mental health services in general. There's been a big transition from county-funded social services to, you know, being handed over to the state and a change in our property taxes in the meantime to go along with that. And the city hasn't had a lot to do with delivering mental health services. Now, that doesn't mean that we shouldn't, you know, try to coordinate with that community. Certainly, our public health department is getting involved in behavioral health issues that the mayor has brought up in his task force. And again, that relates a lot to our homeless issue. So, yeah, I think there's a number of ways we can look at it. Public Health and Sanford just did another Community Health Needs Assessment and homelessness really sort of bubbled to the forefront in that study or in that survey of residents. So the two issues really go hand in hand. And it'll be interesting to see what Public Health and Sanford come up with that they can partner on.
Thank you. Mr. Spanskowski?
I think that this is an issue that can be helped by the city, but it's also, it's a community issue, it's also a family issue. I know that we have adults with mental issues, with physical issues. We also have young children. We have teenagers who have these same issues. And on that level, that needs to be taken care of in the family. And it needs to be encouraged and helped by the city so that they can afford the services that they need, so that they do get the love and the care that they need. And they need a, they need a sense of purpose, a sense of accomplishment. Whether they're young, they're old, they need to have a purpose. Because when people have a purpose, if they have physical issues or mental issues, it is absolutely amazing what a person can achieve when they know that they are special, when they know that there's only one of them, that when they are a creature created by God and they have in, they have incomparable value. And when they have that sense of value, that sense of accomplishment, it helps them to try to push themselves, helps them to try to be a better person and to, to improve their own situation and the situation of those around them.
Thank you. Mr. Zinker?
Mental health services? Well, I think the first thing we have to do is we have to admit that there's actually a mental health problem out there and not, and not use our police force to try to solve some of those issues. Sometimes I think inadvertently that those people get arrested for crimes that, that their mental health caused them to have, whether it's homelessness and they're sleeping on a, on a park bench or, or underneath a tree someplace, what caused that? The other thing is it's through education. We have to really work with our, with our school systems to make sure that we're, we're letting moms and dads know out there that, hey, if you see this from your child, this is really more of a mental health issue than it is being a disorderly, disorderly child, whether, you know, it's a, maybe it's an autistic child or, or something like that. If we as a community embrace it and actually acknowledge that there are mental health issues out there, it'll bring it to the forefront and we can all be leaders to, to help it, not only from the city's perspective, but us as a community.
Thank you. We will now open this topic for crosstalk.
In my conversations on the Local Issues Committee at the chamber, we had a Behavioral Health Subcommittee headed up by Chris Jones before he took over the State Health Department. And their recommendation was that the chamber actually have a program urging businesses to de-stigmatize mental health and addiction so that employees who need help with those issues feel supported and comfortable, you know, going ahead and, and addressing those issues while they remain productive at work and they're home with their families. And it's just a lot less, I guess it's a lot less stressful on everyone involved, but the big, a big part is so that, you know, folks can stay working and stay productive.
I think we have to lead into another area that, and it's become more and more relevant is some of the bullying that takes place. You know, you have bullying in schools and that's going to happen type thing, but you actually, you have probably just as much bullying in a, in a workplace. Somebody's not, not on time for work, their, maybe their productivity's a little bit down. And then you find out, you have a conversation with them that they have ill thoughts of themselves, you know? And that's us as business people and, again, back to our community, that we find them help and we get them help. Maybe not necessarily from a city's perspective, but maybe it's a CHI or a, or a Sanford Health.
I'm pretty involved in the, in the behavioral health community with the school district. And I think our school district does a phenomenal job with kids who have behavioral issues. I work closely as well with the, one of the service providers, the Ann Carlson Center, and, and with the county health and social services and with the, with the, so I guess, I guess I think that for, for children, we're working really hard right now and there are some great successes, but the thing that worries me a little more is when we, when in, when we de-institutionalize people with behavioral and mental health issues, we didn't create the supports for them in the community. So it's, it's, it's our challenge right now is to try and figure out how to help people who, who have schizophrenia or depression or behavioral health issues or, you name any of the problems that no longer have institutional help. So it's certainly never going to be a goal to put people back into facilities, but in the meantime, now we have the issues of people living on the streets or, or living in shelters who don't have those supports. As a parent who has a child with special needs, I'll tell you that there's not a lot of communication in the community about providing additional financial support for that. So if we really want to walk the talk, we need to talk about giving some supports to families.
Thank you. We're out of time for crosstalk on that question. Our next question will first be answered by Commissioner Guy.
What is your position on the concept that is being discussed for new development infrastructure costs to be assigned to the developers rather than special assessments to the homeowners?
Oh, this is, this was a conversation that we had in the Special Assessment Task Force that I co-chaired. We actually looked at special assessments from a couple of different angles, but one of them is special assessments assigned to new neighborhoods. So our recommendation is that, is that we have developers build all of the infrastructure that's necessary rather than just the infrastructure that's below the ground. So they'll do all of it. I think they can probably do it better, faster, cheaper. If we are not special assessing those projects, we can save, we can probably knock at least 20% off the cost of it. We're not paying bonding costs and administration. And then as those costs are divvied up amongst the, the lots, home buyers can, can roll that into their mortgage and they'll get the mortgage interest rate deduction on their taxes. And they won't have this separate special assessment out there kind of hanging over their heads contributing to their debt to income ratio when they go to get that mortgage on the house. So I, I think it's a win-win for everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Spanskowski, your answer.
I think that's definitely something that needs to be talked about. We need to talk to developers about it. We need to talk to, to home builders about that. And really try to crunch the numbers as accurately as we possibly can to see what is the greatest benefit to the developer and to the consumer. Because in the end, the developer is a business. They have to make money, they have to feed their kids. So they have to roll their costs into the cost of the home. It's the way it is, whether that goes through special assessments or through the initial cost of the home. If it costs the developer directly more money, it's going to go into the cost of the home. So that's something that needs to be looked at. The numbers need to be crunched. We need to look at the benefits and the drawbacks of each side and determine which one, again, is the best for developers and for the home buyers. Because if development is restricted, if development is held back and it costs them more to develop, it's going to de-incentivize developers to continue building. However, you want to make the house as affordable as possible to the end consumer so that these people can afford to buy these new homes.
Thank you. Mr. Zinker?
Well, I think infrastructures, if we can get rid of specials, I think it'd be a good thing, as long as it's fair for all the developers. And as long as it's fair that any infill that takes place within the city of Renaissance Zones or older parts of the city. One thing you're going to look at is there are developers out there right now that do that. They, they pay all the upfront costs and they just add it to the, to the price of their lots. There, there are a couple out there that, that use some of the city resources that they have so they don't have to take all the out of pocket out. There's one developer that's got $8 million invested in, into a project and hasn't even broke ground yet. So, you know, he's, he's looking at, okay, what, what's the next approach? You know, granted, those are, that's a lot of lots and things like that. The, and then we just can't talk about specials on new construction. We also have to talk about specials on existing roads. For example, how many roads repair maintenance is are out there that's, that homeowners are going to get special assessed for? So if we're going to talk getting rid of specials for infrastructure on new development, then we have to have that conversation for the entire city. So that way it's fair for everybody.
Thank you. Ms. Nodlin, your answer, please.
Well, I agree that we need to look at the, the equity across the whole city. And one of the things that I'm particularly interested in is, is some of the work that the governor's been doing with this Main Street Initiative that looks at the, the costs to the city to, related to sprawl and development. And I, I know from looking at a lot of the surveys and, and questionnaires that have been done about, of Bismarck residents, of what are your biggest concerns? One of the most, one of the highest ones is sprawl. So while we are, we are going to keep growing and we're going to need the neighborhoods, we need to look at that. We have, need smart managed growth. And we need to know if they, if they, if developments are going in, are, do they have the tax base and, and do they have the, the revenue stream to support the infrastructure that needs to go in?
have the revenue stream to support the infrastructure that needs to go in and to maintain it over time? And that's one of the governor's interesting questions that he's asking of communities, and I think it's a good one for Bismarck to look at. I also think that the same needs to be said for the great growth on the north side, the corridor on the north side, it's phenomenal. We have great economic development and we have our vibrant thriving downtown. So I don't think it's an either/or, that it's a zero sum, one or the other wins and the other loses. I think we have to really carefully plan and have smart growth for where Bismarck and how Bismarck continues to grow.
Thank you. We'll now open this topic for cross-talk.
Well, the input that I have from developers on the special assessment task force was that they were in agreement that getting rid of special assessments on their new developments was a good idea. They were concerned, and it makes sense, they would like to see it phased in over time because, you know, as you know, these projects start years before the first foundation is, the first basement's dug and the first foundation is poured. So they have their cash flow worked out a certain way. So I don't want us to ask them to change horses in the middle of the stream. So it would have to be something we'd have to work with them to phase in. We also talked about special assessments as it relates to the street improvement districts and the maintenance on streets. And so there are some interesting opportunities for other kinds of funding, but they are not available to us unless we work with our legislators to create them. So, you know, a street utility would be really great in concert with a sales tax, and that spreads the cost of it evenly. We would never have to have a special assessment again for street maintenance.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to add something?
So if we, developers take care of the special assessments on new properties, okay, we got that. So we're really not getting rid of special assessments, we're just going to fund it differently. So it's not like, you've got to be careful because we don't, you want to give the impression that, hey, we're going to get rid of special assessments and then all of a sudden we're going to lower your taxes because we still need to pay for those existing streets. We're just going to collect them in a different means. Maybe it's more of a budget-friendly scenario, instead of getting a specials bill for $4,000 or $6,200 or whatever in some of the street districts that are being repaired now. Maybe it's $100 or whatever. But you've got to be careful because there isn't a hole in the middle of Bismarck where we can just go get cash and just do whatever we want to do. We're reallocating where we're going to collect those funds from.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I think that special assessments on existing homes, existing properties has to be re-looked at. Because there are homes out there that are all of a sudden slammed with inordinate amounts of specials. There's, for one instance, there's an empty piece of land. Empty piece of land completely unbuildable is a draw. There's a stream running through it. He got slammed with $19,000 worth of special assessments. He just went default on his taxes, gave it to the city. You know, people are basically getting their properties taken away from them in rare instances, but it is happening. So that needs to be looked at seriously and reconsidered to see what our options are.
Thank you. We're out of time for cross-talk on that subject. Our next question will be answered first by Mr. Splenskowski. What is Bismarck's biggest financial challenge and how do you propose it should be addressed?
I think our biggest financial challenge right now is unwise spending. We need to look, re-look at our spending habits, what money is being spent on, what our priorities are with the money that is spent. It's just overall, you know, I am all for, and I am greatly happy that we have a strong downtown. We needed a strong downtown, it is very good. However, we need to take a lot of that money that's being poured into downtown and leave downtown to the private sector, leave it to the individual businesses to grow and to succeed as business people, and put that money into this, back into the city, back into the residences that need it. We need to eliminate, you know, the unnecessary projects that's going on that people don't want. We need to talk to the people and see what projects they want done, what projects they don't want done, and what projects are necessary for the safety of our city so that when issues do come up, when emergencies do happen, we don't just say, oh, well, maybe we'll introduce a new tax so we can pay for our street maintenance. We need to look at these proactively and foresee them in the future and plan for them responsibly so that when things do happen, we do have funds to fund them.
Thank you. Mr. Zinker, your answer.
Financial challenge, I think, is maintaining what we already have in place. Roads are not built to withstand 30 years of transportation. I look at the housing development that I live in, it's less than 25 years old, and we're going to go through a major reconstruction of streets in our neighborhood right now. And they need it. They're in poor condition. But we can't keep kicking the ball, kicking the can down the road. We can't let government pick winners or losers. You know, I find it ironic that financial challenge, we talk about development, we talk about sprawl, but yet today, there's a bid due today for the city of Bismarck for a request for proposals to infill two city lots on Seventh and Main. My opinion, driven by the city, mind you, driven by the city, my opinion, that's the city picking a winner downtown versus let private development take that place. If someone wants to build on that lot, absolutely have that. Water and sewer are running there, MDU and electricity is there, Mid-Continent's there, but let them come in and say, hey, we'd like to build this for you, for the city.
Thank you. Ms. Nadle, your answer.
I would say the greatest financial challenges that we have are going to be to come up with some innovative solutions for funding infrastructure, both the repair and the maintenance and expansion. And I think that there's been a lot of good work done, but we have issues with stormwater, we have issues with roads, we have issues that need to be addressed. And so I think that's going to be trying to figure out the ways with sales tax or property tax, or how, where is that funding going to come from? I guess I would say that I think the growth of all of Bismarck is really important, and I think all of Bismarck should use every economic tool that's available to it to grow. And if it helps our city by having a vibrant downtown, I think every business owner downtown is going to use every tool available to them to do that and should do that. And as long as the legislature is going to provide that, then I think it's wise to use that. And so I guess I feel like we should focus on fixing what we have and then, like our stormwater sewer system, and then fixing the roads that are, with all of our development. We have great needs in our roads and our road maintenance.
Commissioner Guy?
I think our biggest financial challenge is indeed infrastructure funding. And we've taken a proactive approach to that by, well, the mayor started up the infrastructure task force, and I co-chaired the special assessment task force. And then together, the two task forces have put together a recommendation to the city commission, and that will be on our agenda next Tuesday night. The bottom line is that our current funding methods, mechanisms are drying up. We don't see a lot of money from the state anymore to help with roads. We're seeing very little from the federal government, and I wouldn't expect that to change. So we need to, you know, we need to stand on our own two feet, we need to be innovative about how we're funding this, and we need to make sure that it's fair and equitable for everybody who's paying for it. So we need 21st infrastructure funding mechanisms for our 21st century growth. And with growth, you know, comes extra water system, extra streets, and so we have to fund that and support it, and then we have to maintain it down the road. So in order to be good stewards of our assets, you know, we don't want to defer maintenance. We want to make sure that we're funding everything adequately and taking good care of it.
Thank you. We'll now open this topic to cross-talk.
The RFP that we put out on that empty lot downtown actually was to spur development. We don't, this isn't the city going to build anything there. We put the RFP out so that we could see if there were developers out there that had some ideas about what would fit there, whether it's multifamily housing or, you know, some sort of entertainment or retail or something. But that lot has been sitting there unused and it's been, and it's not been producing taxes. So it'd be really great if a developer could come in and put something really useful there and have it start generating some income. So I don't view it as picking a winner and a loser. I view it as taking something that's been useless and turning it into something useful.
But it was driven by the city, right?
That's the city.
Right, okay. But the city also owns a strip mall to the west of the event center that we're not getting any rent revenue from because it's empty right now. Because that was going to be a Five South project that was going to happen.
It's not entirely empty, but you're right, it was part of Five South.
One out of six, I'd call it empty. But yeah, you're right.
Anyone else?
I think that, I don't know that we have a revenue issue. I think we have a spending issue. You know, people, I keep hearing people saying, oh, we'll just increase sales tax, we'll just increase sales tax. Sales tax nationwide is down every year. Online shopping is affecting that drastically. So that de-incentivizes people to buy things locally. Why would I go to Target to get my, you know, in my case, why would I go to Target to get my diapers for $37 if I can get it on Amazon for 38? Or I should say 34. Wrong way. For 34. You know, and so, sales tax is not a reliable source of income. It's something that, if anything, if at all possible, we should dial back. Because when we tax people less, they build, businesses build. Downtown, that's a perfect example. The taxes were brought down, they had incentivized, they were incentivized, and downtown has exploded. That in and of itself is an excellent example of what happens when we reduce taxes. So I don't know that we have a funding issue, we have a spending issue. We need to look at the things that we are spending money on and prioritize things before we start throwing money at it. So that, to me, is the bigger issue.
But I agree with you in the fact that we have to work with our state legislatures because there are other states who collect sales tax dollars on those internet sales, and it's the way of the future. I mean, I bet if we took a poll, the people watching, the people in the room, how many people got Amazon Prime on their iPhone? It's a lot. You know, so I think we need to, we just need to do what everybody else does and collect that money off of those internet sales.
Thank you. We're out of time for cross-talk on that question. And thank you, candidates, that was our last question for this evening. We will each now have 60 seconds to provide a closing statement, and we will start with Mr. Zinker.
Well, thank you again. I hope it was an informative night for everybody here and at home. There's a couple, I'm not going to lie, there's a couple topics that caught me off guard by the questions. I was a little bit more prepared for some financial stuff. But I think our city is still great. It really is. It's kind of like I equated, my wife and I were chatting before we came here tonight, and it's like our marriage. We've been married for 22 years. It's really great. We've only had about three months out of 22 years that have been bad. But we always try to, we always try to make it better, you know, so we can last another 22 years. So I just hope on June 12th that the, I've earned the trust of the citizens of Bismarck, that they'll elect Greg Zinker to represent them on the Bismarck City Commission.
Thank you. Ms. Nadle?
I also would like to thank everyone and for this opportunity. I would like to emphasize that one of the reasons that I'm running is I think it's really important to have a business owner on the city commission, and if I were elected, I would be the only business owner on the city commission. I am very excited about the opportunity to also look at and help with the preservation of Bismarck's great character and to keep building a very livable city so that we can attract new workers and build networks for them. If, I would appreciate your vote very much on June 12th, and if you want to know more about me, check out bethnadle.com.
Thank you, Ms. Nadle. Commissioner Guy?
And thanks again to the League of Women Voters for hosting this conversation tonight. We've discussed important issues here, and I hope my answers have given voters a sense of my views and my vision for the next four years. I think the two most important issues to tackle are affordable, attainable housing and sustainable infrastructure funding methods. We need to increase the inventory of affordable homes so we can attract workers with their families to fill the thousands of open jobs in Bismarck. And we need to quit paying for 21st century infrastructure with 20th century methods and work with our legislators to craft smart, sustainable infrastructure funding methods. These issues affect the ability of our community to grow and thrive, and I'm committed to working on both. It's been my honor to serve the residents of Bismarck these past four years, and I'm asking for your vote to continue serving our community on the city commission.
Thank you. Mr. Splenskowski?
As well, thank you very much. Appreciate this opportunity to get out and speak with you gals, gals, and with everybody who's watching and listening at home. Bismarck is an incredible place. It's a very special place. That's one of the reasons I moved here. It's beautiful and it's a wonderful city. However, we have many issues that have come up in the last several years, and this city is on the brink of turning one direction or the other. And this June 12th will be a major factor in deciding which way this city is going to turn. We have a very important decision ahead of us, and I hope that, you know, through this forum and through this debate, I have made it clear to my stands on the issues, and I hope to be able to come to your houses and see you. I've been going door to door, talking with people, I've been getting great response. And I believe that local issues need to be brought to the local level. Knocking on doors, shaking hands, talking to people, looking them in the eye. And I hope that through this forum, you can see that I am dedicated to you.
Thank you so much. Our thanks again to the candidates and also thanks to our panelists and timer for this evening, the League of Women Voters, Dakota Media Access for organizing this debate, and of course, our partners, the Bismarck Tribune, the Bismarck Mandan Home Builders Association, the Bismarck Mandan Chamber of Commerce, and the Bismarck Mandan Board of Realtors. This recorded program will replace several times on government access, which is cable channels 2 and 602, in the days leading up to the June 12 election. It will also be available for online viewing at freeTV.org. Thank you so much to the viewers at home and the audience members here tonight at Russell Reed Auditorium for taking the time to learn more about the issues and our candidates for the Bismarck City Commission. Before we close this forum, I want to remind you that voting in North Dakota is simple, and you can find voting information at your county auditor's office and from the office of the North Dakota Secretary of State. Thank you and have a wonderful evening.